Good evening. This is the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, March 15th, 2022, and it is 6:00. So we will start with calling the meeting to order. And Gunnison Clamp, our youth council member, will lead us into pledge. Would you please stand? Thank you, Gunnison. Roll call by city clerk.
Doug Glasbell.
Present.
Dave Brink.
Present.
Robert Ryan.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Anthony Russo.
Here.
Gunnison Clamp.
Here.
All city councilors and our youth council representative are present.
All right. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor, there are not.
All right. The next item on our agenda this evening, item number five, is the Water Conservation Month proclamation. Gunnison and I will be giving that. This is Conservation Month on water. And the proclamation that we're giving tonight started out with a gentleman by the name of Robert Wyland. And he was an artist and quite a painter of whales on walls, and he did a lot of work environmentally. So he was the one that got this started for us. So we will start out here. Whereas water is a vital resource for the long-term sustainability of our community, and whereas it is important for the future of Colorado's water resources, that all communities, individuals, and organizations strive to reduce indoor and outdoor water use. And whereas every person, business, school, and household can make a difference when it comes to conserving water, an essential natural resource for all living things, and whereas the city of Montrose is dedicated to implementing water conservation efforts and inspiring residents to join us in becoming better environmental stewards. And whereas during the month of April 2022, the city will participate in 11th Annual Wyland National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation, pledging to reduce our impact on regional water resources and continue pursuing long-term water conservation strategies. Whereas the city encourages residents to join us in this goal by making a series of online pledges at mywaterpledge.com to reduce the water consumption and to take specific measurable actions throughout the year to improve the sustainable use of our natural resources. Now therefore, we, the city council and youth council, and the city of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Water Conservation Month. And the city of Montrose encourage all residents to take part in the challenge. In witness herof, we have hereunto set our hand and cause to be fixed as facial seal of the city of Montrose this 15th day of March 2022. Myself and the youth council manager, Gunnison Clamp. At this point this evening, we will call for public comments for non-agenda items. So anyone wanting to speak on an issue that is not on today's agenda, this would be your opportunity to do that. Do we have anyone in the audience who would care to speak? Anyone online? Seeing none, we will go on to the next item. Item number seven is approval of the minutes of our previous meeting. I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the March 1st, 2022 regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
I have a motion of second. And that passes unanimously. Item number eight, ordinance 2581 on second reading. This will be our spatialist and community engagement spatialist, Ross Valdez. Will you explain this to us?
Good evening, city council. Thank you for having me tonight. As Mr. Mayor mentioned, we have the second reading for the proposed code modification on supportive housing. This code amendment increases solutions available to help individuals and families experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness by allowing supportive housing as a conditional use in the following zones: office residential, general commercial district, light industrial district, and general commercial district. And that's I-1 and I-2. So the code currently does not allow for facilities that have ongoing and onsite supportive services and housing for those experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. The proposed definition of supportive housing specifies that this use is not on an emergency or nightly basis, and therefore does not include facilities that are commonly referred to as homeless shelters. So occupancy of supportive housing is intended to be long-term with stays of 30 consecutive days or more. This code modification provides additional definitions for barriers to employment and housing stability, onsite supportive services, skilled nursing facilities, and assisted living facilities. This is to further distinguish supportive housing as a use that's separate from existing uses in the city of Montrose. This code amendment is going to make an important clarification in our code in order for supportive housing developers to understand the allowed locations for this type of use. I welcome any questions that you may have, and thanks again for your time.
Council, any questions? Is there anyone in the audience that would care to speak to this issue? And do we have anyone online? Seeing none, I would consider a motion to adopt ordinance 2581.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2581 on second reading as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. And that passes unanimously. Item number nine is ordinance 2582, and this is also a second reading. And this is going to be given to us by Planner William Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council. As you know, this has been presented to you twice before, so I'll be very brief, but a presentation to share. So of course, this is for the Niagara Road annexation. This was brought to you during work session on January 18th and for a first reading on March 1st. And I will start this slideshow here. So this is a piece of property that's the northern half of the right-of-way of Niagara Road, approximately centered at the intersection with St. Mary's Drive. The piece is 0.456 acres. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, the city's water and sewer service areas, and it is 100% contiguous to city limits. The area around the parcel is all zoned B2 highway commercial district, which is intended to provide for business oriented towards serving the motoring public. And this here is the annexation map. This is also in the packet. As I mentioned, this is the northern half of the right-of-way of Niagara Road. The area is designated as residential mixed density low, which provides primarily for single-family homes and attached residential dwelling units. Properties in Growth Area 1, which can include unannexed small enclaves like we have here. I apologize, it seems there's a little bit of a delay, and there we go. And so in summary, staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the health, safety, and welfare, the comprehensive plan, and city annexation policies. Because this is right-of-way, an annexation agreement is not required. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Council, any questions? I would point out, William, that this is basically just kind of the right-of-way, road right-of-way in the sidewalk area for the most part.
That's correct. It's the northern half of the right-of-way that, for whatever reason, probably due to error, it was not annexed back in the 70s when the surrounding area all was.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to make a public comment on this? Anyone online? None online. Then I will consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for adoption of ordinance, excuse me, 2582 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion of second. And that passes unanimously. Item 10 is ordinance 2583, and this is also a second reading. And William Reese is going to explain this one to us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's just the zoning ordinance that goes along with this, and I have nothing further to add.
All right. Any questions, council? Seeing none on that, I would accept public comment if anybody would care to comment on that item. See none? In that case, I would consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we adopt ordinance 2583 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion of second. And that also passes unanimously. Item number 11, it's ordinance 2584, and this is also a second reading. And Mr. Reese will cover this one for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've also seen this one twice before, so again, I'll be brief. Amy presented this to you at work session and on a first reading. This application obviously has the same schedule, and so this is for the Mir addition. This is located northwest of the corner of Locust Road and 6600 Road. The property is about 14.67 acres in size, and it is within the city's urban growth boundary and sewer service area and the Tri-County Water Service Area. The area is urbanizing, and more than 1/6 of the property's perimeter is contiguous to city limits. The annexation will allow for future housing development. Surrounding area is zoned R4, high density, R2, low density, and agricultural. The planning commission has made a recommendation of approval of R3 medium-density district. The R3 medium-density district is intended to provide for an area which is suitable for single-family homes, duplexes, multifamily homes, et cetera. The district provides for other uses which are compatible with such uses. And this here is the annexation map. This is, of course, in your packet as well. There we go. This area is listed as residential mixed density medium, which provides for a variety of residential types mixed within a neighborhood ranging from single-family to multifamily housing. The majority of these areas are not yet developed. In reading our comprehensive plan, we do have a few goals and objectives which support this application. One of our land use goals is to promote higher density infill and redevelopment of underutilized areas and support development in areas which can be easily accessed by foot, bike, or public transportation. And we also have some housing goals, which are to encourage a variety of housing types, tenure, and density in order to meet the community's needs, as well as encourage the accessibility of affordable housing. This property is in Growth Area 2, which consists primarily of properties with some level of infrastructure or moderate proximity to existing infrastructure. And so in summary, the area is urbanizing, and at least 1/6 of the perimeter is contiguous to city limits. The proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, city annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of the annexation and of the R3 medium-density zoning designation. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Council, any questions? We've been over this one several times in the past. I would also accept any public comments on this item. I see none, anything online? Seeing none, then I will accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2584 on second reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. And that passes unanimously. Item number 12, ordinance 2585 on second reading. Mr. Reese, will you cover this one for us also?
Yes, and I have nothing further to add. I have nothing further to add.
Okay. You covered all that before with the rest of it.
Correct.
Council, you have any additional questions on it? Is there anyone in the audience that would care to make a public comment? Pardon? Yes, can you hear us all right?
Mr. Mayor, are you waiting for me?
That's you speaking, Shanie?
We're not waiting for you, Shanie. We're trying to make the attendee whose hand is up. We're trying to allow them into the meeting so they can make their public comment.
Speaker's name is Calvin Meyer. I think we should be able to hear him.
Okay, that, this is Calvin. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, Calvin, if you would, state your full name and your address.
It's actually Calvin Mir, okay? That's, the last name is M-I-E-R, okay? And I'm actually out of Arvada, Colorado. It's 6115 Sheridan Boulevard, Arvada, Colorado, 8003.
All right, thank you. What would you like to speak about?
I just wanted to have some input on it, but you guys have approved the annexation. You know, I grew up in Montrose, left 40 years ago, even though, you know, my mom's still there, and I go back very often. I appreciate the approval. We're only going to try and move further with making that section of land as an integral part of Montrose.
All right, thank you. Have any other comments?
No, that's it. I just wanted to thank you guys. I actually tried to get on a little earlier, but we were having a problem with connection. But I thank you guys for approving it. We're going to go forward, and we're going to make sure that we only help develop the community, not harm it.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
Do we have anyone else? All right. In that case, I'll bring it back here. Is there any additional discussion, council? Then I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for adoption of ordinance 2585 on second reading as presented.
Second. I have a motion of second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item 13 is ordinance 2586 on first reading, and this is by the financial director, Shanie Wittenberg.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. This ordinance is before you tonight, 2586, and it's just a housekeeping measure. Moving of the $9.7 million we allocated to the internal service funds with the original budget ordinance, I'm moving 3.1 of that out and into the employee benefit fund or the health dental management fund. It's just a cleanup because we cannot have that health dental management fund within, we can't combine it with those other internal service funds. So this is really just a housekeeping measure to clean up the budget for 2022.
All right. Council, any questions? I will have a hold, we will hold a public hearing on this, so I will open the hearing. Is there anyone who would care to speak to this? See none in the audience? We have none online. Then I will close the hearing, and I would consider a motion.
I would like to make a motion that we pass ordinance 2586 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion of second. And that passes unanimously. Item 14 is the West Main Revitalization Design Contract. Our city engineer, Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No changes since the work session, so I'll try and be brief. We got a $2 million grant from CDOT that helped us to do a complete streets revitalization project for West Main. So when we talk about West Main, we're talking about, as far as the city's portion goes, between Townsend Avenue and the West Main Bridge, right by the West Main Trailhead. It's a CDOT right-of-way, State Highway 90, but West Main within town, but still controlled by CDOT. We've done some streetscaping improvements, you know, general aesthetic improvements on most of Main Street, Main Street up to Sealeague Avenue, so we're looking to kind of carry that the rest of the way. Right now, West Main is pretty narrow sidewalks, mostly vehicle-oriented, which is a good thing, there's a lot of vehicles that go through there. But we want to use this as an opportunity to widen the sidewalks, make it a lot more pedestrian-friendly and safe for pedestrians to pass through there, potentially add bicycle lanes, and make it more of a complete street that supports all modes of transportation and as well as promotes local businesses by making a more user-friendly and accessible program through that area. So to that end, we went out with an RFP for design through CDOT's process. That's not done with costs, that's qualifications only. We had three proposers on that. Once we received the proposals, the city evaluated those in conjunction with CDOT and our grants department. Oh, we had, yeah, Public Works Engineering, our grants department, and CDOT collectively evaluate those. Through that process, we selected KLJ Engineering out of the main, larger office locally is out of Grand Junction, but they do have representatives here in Montrose, and they have one with us here tonight as well, so thanks for joining us. They were the highest rated through that process, so through CDOT's process, at that point, we moved forward into negotiations for cost of all those, that scope of work for design. With that, we came to a price of $367,001.30. And I'll touch real quick just on the scope, so it's a pretty substantial design effort. So what it will entail are a lot of traffic studies to look at all the various alternatives through there, a lot of public outreach to reach out to businesses, city and county residents to get their feedback on what may be viable, as we try and find that sweet spot of business aesthetics, pedestrian mobility, bike mobility, and vehicle mobility, kind of maintaining all those interests through this corridor. Let's see, so the work will take place in 2020, or throughout the balance of 2022, with some spillover into 2023. If all goes well, construction would likely begin around the middle of 2023 and extend through that construction season. Within the city's budget, we budgeted $260,000 this year, which if you figure, there's probably a 70-30 split between 2022 and 2023, that sets us up perfect. And 80% of those costs are reimbursable by CDOT. The other thing I'll say about tonight's, if it's awarded, it is still contingent on CDOT's concurrence to award, so they have their own separate process that they go through. Been checking in with them a lot recently, and it looks like that's probably going to be another week or two out at that point, once we get their concurrence. If you guys approve tonight, we could then start on design. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
All right. Any questions, council?
To confirm, from a cost standpoint, 80% is covered by CDOT, so that leaves us with roughly, my math is bad tonight.
I'm not going to do math on demand.
About $40,000.
260 times .2? $52,000. Yep. Oh, there it is right there. Yeah. Sorry, at the very last paragraph. Yep, $52,000. I did the math earlier and forgot that I did the math earlier.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we got that on the record. Appreciate it.
Oh, great. Yep, yep.
Right. Anyone else? Any public comment? Seeing none, then I would consider a motion.
I'll move that we award a professional services contract to KLJ Engineering in the amount of $367,013 for completion of design studies, alternative evaluations, and civil design associated with the West Main Revitalization Project as presented. Contract award is contingent upon concurrence to award from the Colorado Department of Transportation.
I'll second. I have a motion of second. That passes unanimously. And Scott, if you come up a little short, I think we can gather the 30 cents to cover that end piece of that. The next item, item 15, is Montrose Pavilion Carpet Replacement Award Contract, presented by Scott Jimshide.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So we have a recommendation for you for a contract award to replace the carpet in the pavilion. Nothing has changed on this since we discussed at work session, but a brief overview is a replacement of carpet throughout the main event space within the pavilion. And we put this out for bid as well. We did receive two bids from local contractors, and pricing was very close, which is a good sign for us. It means we're likely getting a good price. We were able to utilize government pricing for the materials, so the contractors were able to utilize a cooperative purchasing agreement through Omni Partners to purchase the material, and that's, we actually were able to get more material because of that government pricing than what we had anticipated. And so this is a budgeted project within our 2022 budget. The contract with a contingency was well under our budgeted amount. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Council, any questions? Seeing none, I would accept, I didn't see you down there.
You might have saw me, but I'm here.
Trying to ignore you.
Just really quick, just so we know, the carpet that was currently there, how old is that right now?
Almost 30 years.
Almost 30 years. That carpet's been there for 30 years.
Yep.
Excellent.
Been held it very well.
On that.
For what it is, yep.
Very good. And we would expect this carpet to last, not 30, but maybe 10, 15, or?
Equally as long, so 20 to 30.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
I would accept a motion, a public comment on it. All right, in that case, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize award funds in the amount of $114,030.64 for the replacement of the carpet within the Montrose Pavilion, including the award of a contract with Carpet Trends, Inc. in the amount of $103,664.22 as presented.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item 16, as staff reports, sales use and excise tax, Shanie Wittenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me get my screen shared here. So we're off to a good start. January, this is the report for January 2022.
January, there you go.
Okay, you got it?
Yes.
All right. General fund sales and use taxes, because we collect those at 3%. January compared to January of 2021, retail sales taxes at 11.5% or $163,000. Construction- Construction use tax up 85.5% or $48,000. Use and auto use tax down 3% or $3,000, with total collections up 13.2% or $208,000. We have a positive budget variance of almost 30% for January. Public safety, sales, and use taxes. January 1st, 2020, we began collecting .58% to fund public safety. January compared to January of 2021, retail sales taxes at 11.8% or $32,000. Construction use tax up almost 80% or $9,000. Use and auto use tax down 3% or $1,000, with total collections at 13.4% or $40,000, with a budget variance of just over 30%. Montrose Recreation District, June 1st of 2014, we began collecting .3% for Montrose Recreation District. It was to assist with financing the new Community Rec Center. In January, we collected almost $180,000 or 13.2% more than we did in January of 2021. Excise taxes, we also collect .9% hotel excise tax and .8% restaurant excise tax, that's added to the sales tax. In January compared to January 2021, hotel excise taxes up 25.7% or about $1,000. Restaurant excise taxes up 12.4% or $5,000, with total collections up 13.9% or $6,000, with a budget variance of 31.6. Retail sales enhancement, this is a portion of the vendor's fee that was given up to fund retail sales, retail, to promote retail sales in Montrose. In January, we collected just about $42,000 or 12% more than we did in January of 2021, which equates to about $4,000. And that is all I have for you on that report. I'll entertain any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions, Counsel?
Shani, we're kind of curious, how much of that increase that we were seeing across last year and this year is due to increasing prices and supply chain issues that the vendors are having?
Oh, I'm sure that that's contributing. I would not know. I can't put a number to that because I don't have their detailed sales, if you will, but it's definitely, inflation is definitely causing us to see more of an increase.
I think I'm going to just add a statement really quick, since this is a percentage. As prices have increased in the community, it's not that we've raised taxes or are collecting more, it's because it's a percentage of the total, and as prices go up, automatically we're going to see more come in. And Shani, I think, are you seeing that trend probably continuing for the rest of the year as well?
Most likely, yes.
Any other questions? Bill, do you have anything?
Unless you have a crystal ball. This is why we budget conservatively. We don't count on it being high and then budget that way.
Our magic eight ball broke.
Bill, any other staff comments?
It looks like no one.
Oh.
Unless you have a specific question.
Does anybody have a specific question? Okay. Ann, do you have any comments?
No, thank you. I do not have any comments.
I have a question for Ann, maybe because of the really nice weather today. I understand it's not going to be so great tomorrow, but can you just give us an update on the golf course? Is it, is it open? Are people playing? Is it seven days a week? Like, what's the latest?
Yes, thank you. The golf course is open, and you can book tee times online if you'd like, and they've been posting weather conditions online daily, so that when we have snow and then we have a couple beautiful days, people can get online and check is the golf course open that day. And let me just really quick check our hours, because they're the shortened hours right now due to it being darker now in the morning, and...
Okay, so are you saying that it may close? I mean, it's weather-dependent on the weather.
It's weather-dependent right now. And the website is blackcanyongolf.com, or you can get there on our city website. And right now, the pro shop hours are 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. And our restaurant is open Tuesday through Sunday right now, and we'll be extending those hours come April.
Okay. But it's open for lunch and dinner?
Correct.
Good, thank you. Scott, Jim, any additional comments? Mad or plain anything? All right. Then how about youth council?
Yes, we have a couple good projects going on right now. The main one is throughout the month of March, continuing into April a little bit likely. We're trying to do a clothing drive in partnership with CASA. One of our newer members to the council is leading that, so we're proud of her for taking that on. Yeah, other than that, we're continuing our sort of investigation into getting to the root of, you know, different issues high schoolers have within the school. We've had some brainstorming sessions on that, trying to, you know, just help high schoolers out as much as we can. So that's an exciting project we're working on that hopefully soon we'll be able to deliver some good results on toward the end of the school year. Yeah, that's about all I had. It was a great meeting, great to do the water proclamation as well, so, yeah.
Do you guys do anything during the summers, or when school's out, you pretty much?
During summers, we don't have a lot of, any big projects going on. Sometimes we'll send out a message to the group, you know, notifying them of volunteering opportunities with things like Funk Fest. So we do have opportunities for youth counselors to work with the city throughout the year, even if the term is over.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
City Council, any comments? Well, you guys are really quiet today.
May I add to my plug for the restaurant? Can I have a go back? So on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, the restaurant is open for dinner, so it's 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM. On Tuesdays, it closes at 5:00 PM, so depending on when you have dinner, that might be your dinnertime. And on Sunday, we close at 3:00 PM. Right now, we're just not as busy for dinner on Sunday nights. Thank you, thank you for letting me go back.
Thanks for the update.
All right. In that case, I would take a motion to adjourn. We are done for the day. Thank you.